To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody.
Morning.
Hello.
It's snowing Monday the way it looks. We were hoping that that was gonna miss. Looks like it's found. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carry.
For the minutes.
For the minutes of, uh, twenty ninth of January. Any corrections?
I make a motion to submit and approve minutes as printed.
Okay, I had a motion from Dave.
Oh, you did have a motion?
You second it.
I second Dave's motion. He's really quick today.
He is.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Anybody here for general public concerns?
Not for me.
Not from the radio station.
You wanna talk?
Nope.
Okay. Close that part. Looks like Iowa State Extension, Jerry and Holly.
Jerry, you could get that guy to take that hat off.
We know him. He's a good head.
Sorry about that, Ken.
He's a draft plant.
Well, I'm Jerry Chezik. I service the Regional Director for Iowa State University Extension Outreach, uh, based in Port Dodge is where the mail gets dropped, but responsibility is in Hamilton, Humboldt, West Stern, Wright County. And Holly, I'll let you introduce yourself as well.
Holly Burke, we're in Horneters here in Humboldt County. I also cover both the counties. So I'm three days in both counties and two days here in Humboldt, three programs.
So this morning is just a check-in to let you know what Iowa State University Extension Outreach is doing in Humboldt County. And Holly will go ahead and start talking a little bit about the stakeholders report that she's...
Yeah, it's the, on the first page. Um, just some of the highlighted programs we had in this last year was, we did another leadership program. We had nineteen participants out of Humboldt County. A lot of them were from different businesses, High Cap, businesses downtown, stuff like that. Uh, we also did a grant-funded health and nutrition program that's highlighted on the backside. And that was, uh, we did grocery store tours and partnered with the New Fairway here in Humboldt, and we had fifty-one, um, participate in that program. So they just learned about reading food labels, identifying whole grains, um, unit pricing, and that stuff. We also have a program that we've been doing with local businesses, um, What About Me, My Wellbeing. And we've partnered with Sisters Entree for that program and, um, High Cap, um, just working with their employees on financial wellbeing, emotional wellbeing, and health and physical wellbeing.
So in front of that, I just wanted to point out as well, uh, who our nine member elected Extension Council members are. And so we too will go through election here in 2018, and, uh, five of these folks will go ahead and be up for election. So every two years, we replace either four or five, depending on who wants to re-run for the positions, so.
That's in November. Do you have an election?
Same as, yep, Carl, we're on that general ballot as well. The other two pieces that, uh, Holly put in the package, one is data for decision-makers, and we're not going to go through that. I just wanted to point out that, again, you know, where do people get the data that they can use to make decisions, whether it's at the city level, county level, or the state level? And so anymore with the technology and how data is collected, this type of, um, information can be collected, you know, basically, you know, a push of a button of the, of the computer or to go ahead and download what's the most current. And so again, uh, you know, we, we talked about population, and Bruce, I know where you went to school, and so I know you can answer this, in fact of when was Humboldt County's, uh, highest population?
When?
Yep.
I don't know. I'll say it's seventy.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
Yep, nineteen forty. Nineteen forty census. So, yeah, we're close.
Yeah.
And so as we take a look at the demographics, again, Humboldt is very similar to other counties in the fact of, uh, diversity, you know, not very diverse yet as far as ethnicity. We talked about households, we talked about educational attainment. We take a look at that, uh, population pyramid, and again, I, what I always appreciate about that population pyramid on page two is there's a certain group or, uh, different age ranges that we consider to be childbearing years. And Carl will oftentimes talk about twenty to forty-four being that age range. And so as you take a look at your population pyramid on that page two, what does that tell you about that, uh, group of folks that you have currently in the county? You know, those that are potentially going to have children, there aren't as many of them as there are in my age range and older. And again, but you do have a, a good, uh, population pyramid in the fact of the number of younger children that you have here. And so again, it's that middle range where, where we're kind of the shortest. But again, you're not unique in that as compared to other counties within the region or within Northwest Iowa. Socioeconomic, you know, again, very similar to the state of Iowa. People here make, uh, on the average, the highest percentages at fifty to ninety-nine thousand. Um, housing, I know housing has been an issue. We'll talk a little bit more about, uh, prestige foods coming to the region and what impact that may have on Humboldt County. But again, I know new housing is going in, in several places, including Humboldt, and, uh, what will that do as far as the future in drawing people to Humboldt County to live? Um, I guess on the back, and again, you can review that. Unemployment, unemployment in Humboldt County is lower than the state average. It's at three point nine percent. And, uh, you know, a question that I oftentimes ask is, Carl, can you put a face to poverty in Humboldt County? And it's very difficult for us to put a face to poverty, but you'll notice that you have about thirteen point six percent of folks that are below what they consider to poverty level. Again, just a little higher than the state average, and many of those are, uh, families with, with children. And so again, your partnership with the schools and how to support children that don't have as much as some others, so.
It's surprising. I don't know what the figures are now, but used to broke fifty percent of free and used lunches.
You know, I, I think I could've found that too, Carl, and we've been still...
May not be that high. It's a lot of them all.
It's, it is a lot. You know, a bit of a threshold for the school, they, you know, it's something within the last, something new within, I'd say, the last fifteen years, twenty years perhaps, so. The third piece, um, we just follow the Community and Economic Development Program, FAQ, and again, we're not going to go ahead and, and read that, Rick, but what we're going to talk a little bit about is, there are, we have folks as part of our organization of Iowa State Extension Outreach that, uh, you know, we had, we're known for our agriculture, and we're known for our four-age program, youth program. We have specialists in human sciences that can help families, but we also have a unit that can help communities. And so just again, to reiterate that there are, we have expertise and resources, and on that third page, they talk about housing demographics, local economy, civic engagement, leadership capacity, and Holly talks about the leadership program. Again, so many of the folks that we had in this second training, the first one was done in fifty, and, uh, over fifty people signed up for that first one. Nineteen in this one. But people that are moving to the community and to the county see this as a networking opportunity to go ahead and get to, get to know other folks that are within their new community. So many of them are new and want to know more about what the resources are, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet and see if you have any questions of us. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to just come in and check in and let you know that Iowa State Extension Outreach is...
Man, there's a lot of good information in this data and decisions. It's very interesting going through that. Looking at trends, I guess.
Well, yeah, you know, on that first page, in the eighties, Rick did point out that there was quite a sharp drop of population.
Yeah.
Those of us old enough to know what, what happened then, you know, eighty...
Yeah, you had to go somewhere else.
That's right.
Had to go get a job somewhere. It wasn't here.
And that was the time that mom went to town for the first time to work. So, again, a lot of history there. But, you know, if there would be something that came up and you go, I wonder who would know something about that? Contact the local office here, and, uh, we can find people to help. So, kind of the connectors, so.
We appreciate it very much. Any other questions?
Thanks for coming up.
Well, thank you. And, uh, you know, I think at the office today, the, the snow shovel will get pulled out. Maybe more than once.
Don't make her work all day doing that.
Well, I've seen Holly.
Other staff there, we got Eric and Kirsten Bell.
I see a lot of women out there. It's good, you don't have a man scoop, do you?
You know, there's, in, in every office in the region, there's only one guy, the Regional Director.
Thanks, Holly. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
We have a few minutes before grain. We can, go down and appoint those, appoint these for veterans, and are they, are they gonna be here?
No, uh-uh. I was looking through, um, our appointments and updating all of our records on, uh, who got in office last year and all of that, so we can make sure and have updated information. And I noticed that we appointed, um, Kurt Paper last year, and it should've been Merlin Graff. So, I'd like to get that corrected and then get Kurt appointed as of now, or as of January first to, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So actually Merlin Graff's, uh, term, which is a three-year term, would be all of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, so he'd be up in nineteen.
I make a motion to appoint Merlin for his three-year term.
We have a motion.
Second that.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries.
Motion to appoint Kurt Paper for three-year to twenty twenty. Second that as well.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. All right, now we have an appointment for Representative of the eminent Domain Board, owner of the city or town.
This is just on here to remind you, we haven't got that appointment yet, so.
So we need that...
I thought if you had a name, would go ahead and do it. If you don't, it's just a reminder to get...
I had a question the other day. Somebody was on that board, asked me if that's a live appointment, if they have to be reappointed. I told them, I thought it was live, but...
It's ongoing, yeah, reappointed.
It's ongoing, unless they...
Mm-hmm. Yep, until they tell us.
I was right.
Someone like Nathan, who works for the radio station?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think there's...
I don't even know what the hell is still there.
That's a good chance for where.
Put me in charge, I'll do it.
Okay, well, we'll leave you alone then.
We'll keep looking.
Um...
We'll just table that as well.
What we need now, we need somebody that owns property in the city.
Yes.
Somebody who owns property in one of the cities in the county.
Yep.
That's what we...
We're only looking for one person, right?
Just one, mm-hmm.
Just named the one. Well, we'll table it for a week and give you an opportunity to, well, mingle. Anything else? Want to go to your committee reports? I'm gonna go down to the end of the table.
Sounds good. I like that.
Well, I was drawn, so I didn't get much...
Well, I know, but they'll give you a chance to look at your opposite end of your last week.
Got nothing?
Nothing.
Good. All right.
Eric?
I had nothing this past week because I was under the weather for the better part of...
Did I give you the flu?
No.
Oh, good.
No, you didn't. No, I... No, I never, you know, of all the people I blamed for possibly, and it was just a bad, bad, bad cold, uh, so yeah, it, and, uh, the thing I missed that I really wanted to go to was the Supervisor's Day, but these gentlemen, no, unfortunately, I was not able to, to get to that last week.
We got to go over. Dave?
Monday, I had a VA meeting at four o'clock. Tuesday, I went out to the foreman's meeting at eight o'clock, and, uh, they went through, if you have to prove such what we talked about out there, and, uh, what they had planned, what they were doing. And I told them if they needed safety equipment to buy it, uh, as long as it was in the budget, to make their job safer and easier, they was talking about pulling trees that they cut down in the ditch and then cutting them up down there. Somebody suggested getting a clamp or something to pull them up out of there instead of chains. And I said, why don't you get a ice pick or tongs? And, uh, so they were checking into that, so they can just grab onto them with a tong and pull them out, instead of having to wind down the ditch and tie a chain around it. Um, also had the food pantry, but they trucked come in forty minutes early, so we missed that. Thursday, I was down to the statewide supervisors' meeting. Didn't get a whole lot out of that. Learned more talking to the other supervisors around the counties than I did there, so that's all I had.
See, Peggy, I do have to go back. I guess I had that Oxbow thing on Thursday of that week. Twenty fifth.
Ag well.
Twenty fifth. Ag well. Yeah.
Okay, I had about the same schedule as, as Dave. I was at the foreman's meeting on Tuesday morning, and then on Thursday afternoon, late in the evening, we had a meeting down in Des Moines to review the programs coming up for the supervisors, all coming up the next day. I guess I kinda dissed we used to, Dave. I kinda liked the meeting we had. We had Bobby Hanson from Iowa talk about how important it is to work together. We can apply that to us here in this room, as well as what he was talking about statewide. He had some real history about his basketball playing, and it's kinda fun to listen to. And then we had lead city reports by our, uh, lobbyists, Jamie and Lucas, which you guys get emails all the time on that, and they brought to life what we was talking about. And then later on today, we had the governor, Lieutenant Governor speaking to us. They got in kind of a little bit of argument about managed care, and as the governor went out, she said something to somebody, I had a tough meeting this morning.
We feed around the bush too much.
They talked about managed care as far as what's going on. We used to be privately here in the state of Iowa. Now there's forty-six states have it, and she was defending that. It's not working, but they gotta figure out something, you know. This committee I'm on, and I told you last week, up, Community Services, you know, they're responsible for backing up what managed care doesn't pay. Managed care just hasn't paid. But we're finding out maybe there've been some people overpaid, and managed care just start to do what they supposed to do. So I don't know. You hear both sides of the coin. But I thought that was kinda interesting to hear about.
It was interesting, darting back and forth, but they beat around the bush.
Yeah, they sure did.
All of them did.
Yeah, I agree with that. That was the statewide.
Uh, I guess the only thing I went was down Thursday for the meeting in Des Moines. Um, I guess I heard Bobby Hanson's, um, presentation on the teamwork. Um, I guess listening to the governor was interesting. Um, the other, the last speaker that was talking about the, uh, mental health, I think some of the stuff that he had was so far, uh, over our heads. I mean, and, uh, it was almost scary listening to, to, uh, some of the, the things that they are discussing, and, uh, you know, you wanted to ask, what, what's a small county like Humboldt here? What do we do? But I think that we just have to ride along here for a while and see where, where it takes us, and hopefully in the next few months, bring it some more answers out of it. But, uh, that was the closing for the day, I guess.
That was Foxhole, the Human Services Director of Iowa.
Right. So, and I did miss my luncheon on, uh, we were supposed to report our RDP for the daycare luncheon, um, by Friday. And is that next week?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Tomorrow. Or the day after tomorrow.
I'm gonna hopefully...
I'm sure you can still go.
I'm gonna hopefully try to get through that to...
Do you want me to call it in for you, Brooke?
Well, I can, I got a, a meeting after this with Alyssa Okonish, so I'm hopefully gonna be able to twist your arm and...
Want to eat hot lunch?
That's what it is.
Oh, well, I probably can't eat what they have anyway, but anyway, that was what we, my week was.
Good.
Uh, we still have a little time. Are we done with everything else? Do you have anything else for us, Peggy?
Uh-uh. Everything I have comes under budget.
Okay, well...
It's time anyway.
I thought it was nine o'clock. Okay, well, we're going to need a motion to go to grain today.
I make a motion to go to grain.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second.
It's right here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign, we're in grain.
That's a short meeting for you, Peggy.
Yeah, it was a short meeting, but... Okay, guys, you're on.
Oh, girl.
Entertainment. Did you guys go to community course thing this weekend? Chris was in it, and they did straight up.
Oh, I remember several people at church.
Had a packed house Friday night, couldn't get no person to join.
I know about...
Was the honorary?
No, we did pretty well. It could've been way worse.
I think we need to figure out where...
That's why, you and Jody, anybody else?
Schedule between, I think they had their own way Saturday.
For a day.
Maybe cars Saturday afternoon, it's like they were blocking them from somewhere.
Along with them pretty good.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They were pretty full in the parking area.
Good, good, uh, cruises as far as cruises.
The weather was a little rough.
A lot of cloud and rain.
She didn't say it was very good.
Which is very unusual.
Do you guys wanna see the schedule for what they talked about the foreman?
No.
I want my look at that.
Take a look.
We just have most of that, some of it's done, some of it...
Good morning.
Some of it they're working on.
You party all weekend after your concert?
Good Lord, you know.
I appreciate your comments out on it. It's great, but that three bolted job, you think I have a checkbook?
Rick, what's that white stuff out there?
Maybe later on that you do.
Is it the grain or that?
There's a chain on that one, isn't it? You know, I think you're on that one.
Up there on the project.
I think it's a chain, a swing chain, isn't it?
From dinner.
Yeah.
Throwing it.
Well, is it the one that goes on the excavator type thing that's on wheels?
No.
Are you talking about the one that goes on the arm of the backhoe?
It's on the arm of the backhoe.
Yeah, the one they reach out and get...
They travel here for years.
Grab it and pull it up, instead of the log chain.
No, they, uh, the...
Motor, or...
Motor patrol, or whatever, motor...
The one that they're trimming the trees with.
Yeah, it's on, it's on wheels.
Yeah.
And it's got an arm. It's not a backhoe.
No, but it's, it's, uh, it's chains, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on a backhoe. No.
It's on an excavator?
It's on a, yeah, mini excavator type thing.
Is it?
Yeah, it's not a backhoe.
No, no, but it's, it's a machine.
Yeah.
But it's on a blazer.
That's got blades. It's got blades. It's blades. It's blades.
Some of them are chains.
That one's blades. Because, no, they've had to replace the blades, because they...
It wasn't changed, and they, they...
Yeah, that's, it's, that's a slinging blade.
One of those today.
Not using it, like, right meeting.
Yeah, it's just too easy. It's bigger than we had down there. Too easy to use.
It's just, I didn't wanna...
It was a pretty good meeting up there.
It lasted an hour.
I didn't miss too much.
Okay.
Yeah.
I knew the other would be...
When, when did you get, when did you get notified about it? How much note, how much in advance did you get notified about it?
All right, we're at eight fifty past here, Humboldt County, Wright County Joint CD three dash forty-seven, continued completion hearing.
Yes, um...
Continued.
Okay. Um, this is the project up by Hardy. Uh, it went very well. I see Rick Peterson's here today. Rick and Travis Peterson did the work on it. It's Peterson excavating, or Tommy Cave, as it's affectionately referred to at times, Tommy Cave, Rick. Um, the estimate number three that paid everything with the retainage was almost forty-one thousand. I don't know if there's been action taken on that one.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. So it's forty thousand, nine hundred, eighty-five dollars and ten cents.
Get that number again, forty thousand?
Forty, forty thousand, nine hundred, eighty-five dollars and ten cents.
Well, last time when we had this, you weren't here, so we couldn't...
Oh, okay, then, yeah.
You were at the last newsroom.
That's right, that was the deal. That's it, that's the timing.
We've done ninety-eight-five dollars and ten cents.
So then, um, the, we've also submitted pay estimate number four, which is the final estimate, in that it, uh, we pay the retainage. The total retainage held then would be eight thousand, fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. Eight oh five four, one two oh. Uh, we did a good job with it. Um, there were some complications at the beginning, um, where it couldn't be reached by anybody, anybody's home-reached machine, so they dug down some and did the work, and then they sorted that. They cooperated with us that, absorbing some of the costs of that. Um, yeah, they just did a good job. Care about the work. Rick, do you have anything to comment on, or...
Some of the extra costs, there was, uh, concrete surface drain that needed repair, but when we got into them, one of them was over eighty feet long, and to do the right connection, meant we had to go to twenty-four inch steel.
Yep.
And that, there's twenty-five hundred dollars of that extra cost of one surface drain.
Yeah.
And probably since it's thrown out all the concrete, the, you know, went a hundred and twenty feet and just went smaller, tight maybe, but we tried to, had six one way and half a dozen the other.
Yeah, you have to make the decision as you're, as you're going on some of those, but they're reasonable on their, after work cost. Um, we like working with them for that reason, and they're, they care about the work, so.
All those claims are in on that one?
That's it. It's completion.
Don't know, there, you haven't, don't have anything, do you? Chris, it's, it's claims?
Yeah, there was a little bit of crop damage claim. I thought there wasn't.
Yeah, question.
I had one, because I had, I talked to you that day, when we were going through the process, and you told me to put something together and submit it.
Yep, yep.
I didn't realize that was gonna be the only one. I thought that was your standard, this is my first kind of go-around with the drains clean-out. I just thought that's what everybody did, I guess, and stuff.
Well, and sometimes people do it, sometimes they don't. They just let it go. Um, it's not too big a deal, but that's a legitimate claim.
That is, that was, we had a question on that, cause is it, what's the top size easement right of way on dredge ditches?
At least fifteen feet.
At least fifteen feet?
Yes. I didn't know if this included the fifteen feet.
I just went the outside, I mean, I farm up to the ditch, so it would probably include that and stuff.
Okay.
You just wanna do the fifteen, fif- subtract the fifteen on that.
Yeah, and we can come up with that, um, length.
So just be twenty-five times the half mile or fifteen?
As far as the area?
Well, I did forty feet, and so it'd be twenty-five, fifteen minus-
Yeah, I think forty minus fifteen would be twenty-five feet times the length.
That was a question on that, were you here for when we went through this?
No.
No, I wasn't.
Okay.
I was at the table, cause we didn't know how.
Well, and Rick wa- Rick wasn't here either, so, uh, that was a question, is that right, Chris?
He was vacationing up north from the storm.
Yeah, I know, I was here for that meeting.
You're figuring out about twelve hundred dollars?
I don't know what the recalculation would be, it's, uh, I talked to Rick on the phone as the process was going along, because like I said, this is my first kind of go around with the drains clean out, and he told me to-
Sure.
Put something together and let him do his dance and stuff, so.
Okay.
Part of the extra width on that, last summer when we were cleaning it out, it was so wet and sloppy, we'd set it on the bank, well, it just ran out.
Ran out of the field.
The soil rose into its field, you know, because of the slope of the ditch.
Yeah.
And the, how wet it was, but that's, that's how it got to be more than-
The volume of silt that you're pulling out too.
Yeah, it was all dammed up and it was just too-
I get twelve hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Paid twenty-five and spent forty.
What's your guys' wish, I mean, if it's turned up to you?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine to make a motion to prove the pay estimate number three and number four, um, with the damages submitted.
Uh, say we got, yes corrected?
Yes, yes.
I take it Rick's motion?
So we have a motion to pay the estimate number three for forty thousand, nine eighty-five, ten, and, uh, number four for the eight thousand, fifty-four dollars and twenty cents? And then the claim, and the new number on the claim is?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred thirteen and eighty-nine cents.
Twelve hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents? Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign? Motion carries. What was that number again?
I totally interrupt.
Twelve thirteen and eighty-nine.
Thanks for doing a good job out there.
Well, I really appreciate the work, fellas.
We appreciate you doing it.
It's one contractor we never hear any complaints about, keep up the good work.
Well, that's my aim. That means a lot to me, I live here and see all them folks, so it's, no bad job, that just faces you down in a hurry.
And he'll have a claim here on, uh, sub five oh eleven, he was authorized to do an hour of clean out there, and Trish has built on that now, but I don't think that's gonna be a gen, is it?
No.
No.
See another time.
And then, how do you wanna do that? Does it need a motion, or does it need a?
Just a work order. Probably just a signature, isn't it? Yeah, I would think so. Yeah, it's just a work order, so just take a signature.
Okay, I'll just do that way, I have it here.
All right, we were past our nine o'clock, but you're assuming you're Kevin?
I am.
So we're waiting. We got Rick.
I'm not sure what you're waiting to hear, but I'm here.
Not this moment, but you're gonna be, you've got other stuff to do.
We even got the hot seat going on.
I wanted to visit with you about this briefly.
They're going to Bristol, but first up Monday morning.
Oh, sure, sure, you bet. I guess it's, yeah, I don't know, some of you may have been where Kevin has made a presentation before, but-
Were you down at the drainage meeting, what, two years ago?
Yes.
I thought that's-
Yeah, I was, you bet.
Cards all passed out. Feel like the biggest card dealer here.
You kinda look like one too.
Yeah.
Well, Rick asked me to, uh, to come up today, and actually I had talked to Mike Borland, uh, last week, understand you guys are having continuing discussions on ag drainage, we'll close your project. No, that's been a, uh, an interesting project, to say the least, and a very, very high priority for, uh, not only the, the county, but the DNR as well, through the past several decades, anyway. Um, I mean, it's, it's a little bit about me, um, I, I own and operate a company called Emmons and Oliver Resources, I manage their Iowa office, we're an environmental consulting firm, uh, I work out of the Ames office. We do, uh, we do a lot of wetlands regulatory work, so we do a lot of wetland fundations, work with NRCS on wetland determinations, and one of the biggest things we do is help people find mitigation, when they've gotta replace wetlands one place or another. A project I've been involved with, uh, gosh, since, for at least the last seven, eight years, is the Iowa Agricultural Mitigation Bank. And, uh, the Iowa Ag Mitigation Bank is a nonprofit, developed specifically for the purpose of replacing farmed wetlands in one place, with mitigated wetlands someplace else. Um, throw out an, an example, let's say, uh, let's say a, a, a farm producer has a one acre farmed wetland out in the middle of his field, he's been dragging tillage equipment through it every year, it gets, he gets inputs put on it, uh, he gets tractor stuck once every couple of years, it's nothing but a, uh, an inconvenience for them. That wetland has, you know, pretty limited functional value, uh, but NRCS considers it a farmed wetland, and therefore it can't be drained, it can't be tiled, filled, anything else. That landowner has always had the option, uh, in, in maintaining their, uh, their USDA benefits, to replace that wetland, maybe someplace else on their land, um, not everybody has that, that option. The idea of the Ag Mitigation Bank is, we're doing rather, you know, the small to medium to sometimes even large wetland restoration projects, uh, on a piece, and we're able to sell credits out of that, so that landowner can actually come to the bank and purchase a credit for that one acre farmed wetland. That wetland is now mitigated, and the farmer can go ahead and proceed with, uh, with draining it, filling it, whatever, whatever they decide to do. The advantage of that is, we're typically working with a lot of higher quality wetlands, uh, in the, in the ag drainage bank, and it's, it's, it's what we call an umbrella bank, and that we've got multiple sites. And when we need more credits, we go out and look for the next site. There's a, there's a couple of things that we're looking for, in terms of the Ag Mitigation Bank, we're looking for producers that need those mitigation credits, because we've got credits to sell. We're also looking for sites to be able to mitigate those wetlands, so we're looking for wetlands to restore. And I think that's probably the, the, the most logical place that Iowa Ag Mitigation Bank might be able to help out with, uh, with the, the ag drainage foreclosure project. Uh, when I first saw the, saw the, saw the plan set from, uh, from Mike Borland the other day, and I knew this is a sizable area, I really did, uh, been looking at this forever, gosh, I, I can't tell you the number of conversations I've had with Bob Lins about it. Quite honestly, a hundred and ninety-four acres of, of wetland to be restored is, is, is too big for us to handle. Um, we're looking at sites right now in the neighborhood of, you know, twenty to forty acres of restorable wetland. There was a time we were looking at, at, at larger restoration projects, uh, especially up on the Devlin River, because that's where, what's where we see most of our impacts. But, eh, that time is, uh, has passed, just in the sense that, uh, with, with land prices and commodity prices softening, our market for those credits just isn't as strong, so our board of directors is a little hesitant to take on large projects. So we're looking at smaller ones, so that we can take off smaller bits, smaller bites. We've got, let me think here, one, two, three, three sites completed right now, we're selling credits out of the third, and we're about ready to, uh, close on our fourth site, uh, which would be in Raccoon River watershed. We're selling credits out of all those, two, two of the, two of those, the first two are, are completely sold out now. Probably our most frequent, uh, customer from the ag drainage, or, or, ag drainage site of it, are, are drainage district projects. Let's say, uh, let's say Humboldt County's gonna do a new project, and, uh, because of the increase in, in drainage coefficient, NRCS says, you have to replace all the farmed wetlands in that drainage district, and maybe it comes up to, you know, ten acres or something like that. Drainage district's able to come to the bank and purchase those. Uh, so it's a, it's a very simple transaction, and it's been used here in Humboldt County, um, it's, uh, it tends to be very effective. We all know, and I'm the first to admit, the ag drainage closure project is a big complicated project. Uh, my first reaction from, from seeing the, the plan sheet that Mike Borland provided though, is I know there are a couple of isolated tracks, and a good place for us to be involved might be to help maybe on one of those, uh, smaller isolated tracks, rather than the large, you know, central area, that may make more sense. I don't know, uh, a tremendous amount about, you know, how the project is intended to be staged at this point, um, how landowner negotiations are going, where, where all the funding sources are coming from, things like that. But the fact that there are a couple of isolated tracks, that, you know, that gives me, uh, you know, a pretty good idea that maybe that's a good place for us. Knowing that there's gonna be state resources and, and, and hopefully other resources used to, uh, to, to, you know, to, to mitigate some of these wetland impacts, or to create wetlands. Maybe those resources are best served in the large, you know, main complex, and we might be able to help out with, uh, you know, some of the isolated ones, so. That's kinda what I'm thinking, uh, here for questions, what can I, what can I answer for you?
I'm gonna, I don't understand this very much, what kinda dollars are you talking about, with the purchase of credits and these kinda things?
Excellent question, very good question. Because we're a nonprofit organization, we're not a, what's known as a, a, a commercial wetland mitigation bank, that, that some of you may be familiar with, Corps of Engineers manages those, there's, uh, there's about a dozen of them statewide right now. They're selling wetland mitigation credits to developers, sometimes county engineers for bridge projects, sometimes the Walmart stores that are going in. Those credits range anywhere from thirty-five thousand to about sixty-five thousand and per acre in Iowa, they're incredibly expensive. Cause we're a nonprofit, and we keep our costs at as absolute low as possible, our current credit price is about twelve thousand an acre. So it's a very reasonable way to, uh, you know, to mitigate those, those impacts.
We had wetland situation up in the Okoboji area here a few years ago, and, uh, that was a different type of mitigation, and it was, several years ago it was twenty-five thousand an acre.
Yeah, they're very, very expensive. Eh, and, and the, the reason for, for those high costs is, is really twofold. One, um, it's a risky business, and, and a banker is, is taking on the risk, that's why the prices are high. Second is that it's a, you know, it's a private commercial venture, and the idea is to make profit. Our, this Ag Mitigation Bank, we don't deal with the Corps of Engineers, we're not dealing with what we call, uh, you know, section four oh four, the Clean Water Act, this is strictly swan buster only. This is, we're only dealing with NRCS, this is only so folks can, can maintain their, their USDA benefits. That, you know, combined with the fact that we're nonprofit, not trying to, you know, uh, put a bunch of money in the bank, we're, we're able to reduce costs pretty well. Typical areas that we're looking for, um, most cases is prior converted farmland, that, that we can restore to wetland, you know, sometimes it's the simplest, just to save on some, some drainage features. And usually low cost land, um, high quality, high value farmland isn't really that, that suitable for us, we're, we're looking for the, the poor stuff, stuff that's hard to farm, stuff that's continuously wet, but yet is still considered, uh, you know, restorable, so.
How about something that's currently in a, in a CRP program?
Very.
Not a wetland program.
Right, right.
It's a CRP program.
Absolutely. Uh, so mitigation and CRP don't mix, but CRP is a temporary program, so oftentimes we're very interested in CRP projects, are, you know, set to expire in the next couple of years. We've had, uh, we've had a couple of cases where the, the landowner was, was really interested in converting to a program, but they just bought out of CRP. They were able to pay the penalty and, and still participate. So as long as, you know, as long as the two are divorced, we, we, we can absolutely proceed. A lot of times, something that's in CRP, uh, means that it was, you know, marginal farmland to begin with, we're looking for those kinds of areas, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that's probably what this area really is, is-
There's a portion of it.
Yeah, yeah, without, without drainage, it is just not very suitable for farming.
Part of those are so close to the highway, if they close those wells, don't we worry that it's gonna get pretty close to the highway?
Yeah, that's something that you have to deal with.
Wouldn't the state be more interested in doing something like that, because of the fact you closed those wells, and there's nowhere for that water to go? Um, those, what, three are right next?
Yeah, there's two that you'd have to go a long ways for. Uh, I don't know if you saw this one, but here's Gilmore and Highway three.
Sure.
These two.
Oh, gotcha, yes.
Yeah, in particular, right next to the other, yeah, and this one shows the route of the outlet, so.
And, and, and believe me, Rick's the engineer, I'm the biologist, but, but sometimes I say that, I'm not an engineer, but I play along on TV. Your county engineer's gonna have to determine, you know, safety requirements, in this case DOT. I have seen instances where, you know, they may want, uh, you know, they may want a bench on the side of the slope or something like that, so if an air cart runs off the road, they're, they're not gonna direct on the water. Yeah, yeah. That said, uh, there's a lot of counties in the state that have water right up to the roadways, and it just kinda depends on soil types, and how much water there is, and stability of the highway, and things like that. DOT's got places where they've got water right up there to the road too, so, but certainly a consideration, you bet.
So how does that work?
We did, go ahead, go ahead.
As far as, you know, you pick a, a location?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, that, you know, would be a great one to convert back to wetlands, you know, not, not huge, but a smaller area.
Sure, absolutely, and I, I, I take a, take a bite that, that, that is, is reasonable enough for us to be able to take on, not necessarily the whole project.
Right, so you have that area, or maybe a couple of areas identified, so do you, are you purchasing the ground from the landowner?
Good, good, very good question, you guys ask awesome questions.
You're good.
No, no, we don't want to purchase ground, we wanna purchase permanent easement, we don't want on fee title. Um, as, uh, the way our organization's set up, we, we have the ability to, to own fee title, there's been a couple of cases that we've considered that, that maybe that would make sense, but we're really not a land management agency. We just suit on, on a permanent easement, uh, and pay for all the restoration costs, uh, and, and essentially the permanent easement in most cases is, is the ag value of the farmland. Literally paying, you know, full value, uh, but rather than fee title, we just soon have the, the, the permanent easement and the landowner retains any fee title. There may be cases where they're interested in, uh, in, in not owning that fee title, and, and it's very possible that they'll say we buy it in the name of the county conservation board, or the DNR or something, we absolutely have the ability to do that. But long term, uh, you know, we want to, we want to own, operate, and manage that bank until the credits are sold, and we wanna be able to walk away after that, so we're looking for a, you know, somebody else to manage that long term.
You talk about permanent easement, that's only ninety-nine years, right? After that they-
Theoretically, they call it a perpetual easement, but I, I think technically it's supposed to be renewed every ninety-nine years, so I, I've got it on my list of things to do.
Yeah, and I know some people ask the question, where the, the payment, could it be spread over years, or is it long term, or?
Absolutely, it can, it can be, uh, it can be done a number of different ways. Uh, one of the advantages of, of this project is, we have tremendous non flexibility, there's, there's, there's not that many rules, in fact, most of the time we're making something up as we go. That, that's both good and bad, sometimes there is not, not necessarily a good precedent to follow. Our typical contracts in the past have been literally contract sales, where we're paying for, we're paying for acres as we're selling credits. So we'll make a, you know, maybe it's a ten, twenty percent down payment to, uh, to execute a, a purchase agreement with the landowner. Uh, we sell, uh, we sell five credits out of that bank, we pay the landowner for five acres. We go six months, maybe a year, and we don't sell any credits, and there's no payment. All of a sudden the drainage project comes up, and we've got, you know, ten or twenty at once, and then we'll pay for those ten or twenty. That, that's, that's one model that we follow that works very well for us, that we don't have to go out and get bank financing to do that, um, it, it, it's not necessarily something that works for everybody. We know that there's gonna be circumstances where we're gonna have to go to a conventional bank and, and, and pay for that, and maybe put cash in it upfront, those, those circumstances may very well come. Just so happens that, uh, the landowners that we've worked with in the past that are willing to share the risk with, with what we're doing, and have wanted to, you know, to, to spread those payments out.
We did a little straw poll, whatever, meeting, and it was about fifty-fifty, some wanted wetlands, some wanted-
Sure, yeah.
So there is a lot of interest in the wetland process.
Right, right, you bet.
So, that's something we can probably work through.
Good.
So my question is, if you guys only would be interested in bits and pieces, um, and they've, uh, landowners decided they wanted to go with the wetland, is there somebody else that would take something on that, that big, or?
Sure.
Or are we tied to try and piece it with you, or then try to drain part of it? I, I, I guess I'm more confused than-
I'm speculating, and that, that, that's all I can do right now, without, you know, having to talk to your county conservation board, and your, uh, you know, the, the local DNR wildlife biologist and a few others, but this overall, you know, potential wet, wetland restoration project is not anything new, you know, I'd also been looking at this thing for, for years and years and years. I have to think that there is some, some interest in the conservation community to develop something out here, whether it's a, a county park, whether it's a DNR restoration, public hunting, something like that. There, there may very well be landowners that, uh, you know, especially in isolated tracks or something, where they just wanna keep it themselves, and use it for their own hunting purposes, or, you know, bring the grandkids out there or something, that, that, that's absolutely fine. We can be pretty flexible in terms of, you know, who that, that third party long term manager is, whether it is the landowner, whether it's, you know, county, or it's DNR, whoever.
Can it work in conjunction with the CREP program?
Good question, eh, eh, not really, eh, eh, because CREP is, is actually a CRP program, um-
I mean, can you have part one and part other?
May, maybe, eh, you know, so, eh, just because there are some isolated tracks, maybe one of them could be a CREP project, and one of them could be a Iowa Agricultural Mitigation Bank project, that's, that's certainly possible, yeah.
How does that work with, um, natural sinks in your, in that area?
With natural wet?
Sinkwell.
Oh, um, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm less familiar with how a CREP project might interact with a, with an ag drainage well, uh, or, or a natural sinkhole. My experience is usually, the, the wetlands involved with CREP projects are, are, you know, usually you're constructing a, a, a pretty good sized structure to actually impound that water. Whereas ag drainage well closures, in most cases, you're just simply capping the well and, and restoring the, the natural hydrology well, you might not get as, as, you might not have as much drainage area, uh, you might not have, uh, as much surface, uh, you know, the area of surface water, so they might be smaller. Depending on size, I, I guess some of them probably could be bigger, but- The real purpose of creps is, you know, denitrification of the ag drainage coming through those creps. These wetlands, I don't think are gonna be quite as effective just because they simply don't have as much drainage area.
If you break this down to an individual landowner, you know, so the smaller project, not the huge project.
Right, yep.
How would this benefit them? I mean, if they had, you know, you did a study, you looked at it and said, "You know, just like I said before, one or two smaller areas could be, and it's got a drainage well, we're gonna cap that, we're gonna convert this to a wetland." I'm not gonna say, "Well, let's just use twenty acres."
Sure, yeah.
Just for a number.
Right, right, yep.
And you guys get involved.
You bet.
What benefit is this to the landowner then? How are they gonna get directly benefited? Because this is on their land.
Yep.
It's a twenty-acre chunk, you've determined.
The most significant benefit is by being paid the cost of the permanent easement. So they're gonna get darn near fair market value payment for their land, but they still retain ownership of it. We're basically just buying the farming rights. So we have the ability to pay for construction, for the monitoring that we need to do to make it successful and for the permanent easement. So basically, the landowners', you know, costs are very, very minimal and they still own the property when they're done with. Let's say it's twenty acres and maybe it's somebody that wants to do a little duck hunting now. But maybe they wanna, you know, sell it in the future to somebody else that wants to start a little duck hunting club or something like that. They absolutely have the ability to do that. As long as, you know, the wetland stays there, the easement runs with the land, they have the ability to do that.
What advantage, probably two, it's low-productive land as far as farming.
You bet, absolutely. We don't want the good stuff. Nope, we want the lower producing stuff.
But did I, in your explanation of payment for the easements, so if that twenty acres, they may not get paid upfront for the entire twenty acres to begin with.
Sure, it depends on how they wanna arrange the...
Because you said you want to, you're kind of doing it as a, because there is mitigation, as you get mitigated acres, then they get the payment.
That works best for us, that's not the only way to do it.
I mean, they can have a discussion with you and see what...
It does, if you spread that income over years, you pay less in taxes.
Right. So it might be beneficial, but the key thing is, because I'm thinking there's some absolute direct examples in here that are in CRP right now.
Right, right, yep.
There's some of these contracts set to expire fairly shortly, so it's not a big buyout-type thing.
Exactly, you bet.
And can they take that? And, you know, you have to go out and survey and do all that and determine what acreage. I'm just using twenty for a round figure. Say it so it comes up to twenty, might come up to forty. Is forty acres too much for you guys?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, so say it comes between twenty and forty acres.
Sure.
That, they say, "You know, this probably looks like a good option," because that's for their land involved in this drainage well business.
Right.
That's the only land that affects. So if they can get it out of a CRP into a wetland, they'll incur no cost then, because you guys take care of all the cost involved to turn it back into a wetland. And basically then, like Rick said, they could look, and Rick and Rick, you can look for payments as that gets mitigated down the road.
Yes.
They'll get paid for that. Of course, they won't have the so many dollars a year CRP payment.
Right, right.
Or this CREP program thing, that's a yearly payment, but, and they still own...
But they still own the ground.
Yep, and it's a sellable easement. So if they would sell, if that twenty acres is involved in a two-hundred-acre tract and they sell the two-hundred acres and the twenty goes with it.
You bet.
They can sell that and if there's remaining mitigated acres, the person that buys that has that potential.
That's exactly right.
I mean, I see this whole project, and it seemed like there's a lot more questions than answers at that meeting than there was, but we're gaining, is breaking this off into more bite-sized pieces than a giant project.
Sure.
And this is part of it, because I think there's some of these that speak to doing something like what we're discussing with you, Kevin.
Right, I think so too. And I say that for a couple of reasons, and probably the most important is that... It's my perception of this project in particular, and gosh, you know, Rick and I have talked about this for years and there's no surprises out here, everybody knows this is coming. This is the last cluster of ag drainage wells in the state. IDALs have been working hard to close these for years and years and years. One of the things that I thought would really happen is that at some point, the state legislature's gonna come together and appropriate the money required, finally close these out. I'm not seeing that right now and I'm not sure that's gonna change in the next couple of years. Now we're starting to look at other alternatives. So if we can't do it all at once through, you know, state legislative funds, what else can we do? Because the permits are gonna expire and these landowners gotta make some decisions, so. Yeah, I think that's an important way to look at it, that maybe other partners can bring to the table as well, you know, whether it's Heritage Foundation or, you know, the DNR, whoever might be interested in helping, you know, the overall, with the overall project goals. I think that's gonna be important here.
One other thing, if you do sell your land, basically sell your easement, you're still responsible for property tax on that property. Do you have any idea what they assess that at then?
Not specifically for Humboldt County. What I do know, we've talked to several landowners about this, every county has, you know, some sort of natural resource exemption. Sometimes it's a partial exemption. I know there are some counties that have, they literally have a separate exemption for prairie and woodland and wetland and buffer and number wood. And some of them just have a straight natural resource exemption. So, yes, the landowner is responsible for paying those, but what we encourage to do is, you know, absolutely work with the county and find out if there's an exemption that they qualify for to at least get those reduced.
Get it reduced, yeah. I have a farmer piece that has some federal wetlands on it.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, you had to go through the process to get it reduced, you can't get it eliminated.
Oftentimes you can't, right.
They just reduce that forty acres that that portion is on.
So they're not taxing this farm ground, they're taxing it as some kind of a natural resource restoration, sure, yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure people realize they still have to pay taxes on it.
How about maintenance?
Sure, yeah.
How is that handled, who pays for it and what is required?
Through the IDAL, we set up a project, I mentioned we're gonna pay for the construction. We're also accounting for some future maintenance, really in two separate ways. The first is during the life of the bank. And let's say we've got the bank open for, say it takes us seven years to sell all the credits out of it. During that seven years, Iowa Ag mitigation is responsible for all maintenance. After that point, it's gonna revert back to the landowner. But one of the things that we're gonna do is put some money away into an escrow account or something like that for the landowner to be able to draw on. So that, you know, heaven forbid, there's a flood of ninety-three that, you know, I like to say takes out a structure, in this case it's gonna be a flooded well, there probably isn't gonna be much help to it. What may be more likely is, you know, maybe there's an invasive species problem or, you know, the willows take over and the landowner wants to see those mowed. Well, we're gonna put some money aside in some kind of interest-bearing account to be able to, you know, provide for at least some maintenance.
How about water quality monitoring or anything like that?
Sure, absolutely. And specifically with this project, I would really think that there might be some interest from IDALs and DNR to do some. We don't typically with our projects. One of the things that we know upfront is that we're typically replacing very low-quality wetlands with very high-quality wetlands. We know we've got an increase. How much increase? We don't necessarily have a solid reason to be able to measure that, we just know it's better. We do do what we call a functional assessment and then we do some measurements in terms of, you know, what's out there today for functional values, providing wildlife habitat, providing flood storage, the sediment trap, and compare that with, you know, the final product. And what we're trying to do is make sure that there's a functional lift from what we're replacing with what we're losing and what we're gaining.
So, if you're thinking of possibly doing a mitigation area and if that may include a natural drainage well fractures in the soil, do you, do you close them also then?
I don't know enough about them, to be quite honest with you. I guess the ones I'm familiar with are the, you know, the man-made ag drainage wells that are relatively easy to cap. Natural ones, I really don't know much about the engineering required to do that. If it's relatively straightforward, that may certainly be a possibility because, you know, we want the same, the goal is the same. We're trying to, you know, seal off that groundwater and protect it and restore the wetland at the same time. So if it was, you know, relatively straightforward and it wasn't a tremendous engineering and construction burden to do that, I think we would certainly look at it, yeah. Any idea how many natural wells there are out there?
Lot.
Lot.
Probably just as many as...
Probably more.
Yeah, probably.
Probably more. In this area on this map, I would bet a lot of money, there's a lot more natural sinks than there is any listed ag wells.
We have to look at their little boats, you bet.
They're large, I mean, they're a large area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think trying to close them, but it'd actually be very difficult.
Lots of them.
Right, true. One, you know, one benefit is that, you know, let's use this example of a twenty-acre site. And let's say there's a couple of natural wells out there in addition to, you know, a man-made ag drainage well. One benefit we're gonna get is just by, you know, just by stopping the farming practices and including some buffers, we're gonna get some natural protection just for that.
Right there.
And I'm sure they could burn them or something.
Absolutely.
To slow the water.
You bet.
Maybe. They're all different. They're natural.
Yeah, and that's just it, we have to, you know, we have to look at that. You know, from, you know, a very general perspective, we're looking for sites that are easy to restore. The more complicated they are, the more expensive they are. Those tend to, you know, fall by the wayside and we wanna go with the easier ones usually.
Are you willing to go out as weather permits this spring?
Sure, yeah.
And look at some of these sites?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I'm anxious to. On a, you know, let me take my Iowa Ag mitigation bank hat off for a moment and talk to, just as a, just as a wetlands guy from Iowa, I've been extremely interested in what's going on out here for years and years and years. There's an opportunity to do something, you know, really fantastic in the world of natural resources in this area. And to be any part of that at all, I'm very interested, absolutely.
Well, I think that, again, it gets back to, it wouldn't be all of them listed.
Sure, yeah.
But some of them.
Absolutely.
And you'd try to pick and choose, Rick is familiar.
Yeah, yeah.
He'll need to point you in the right direction. And so that, because we're kinda bad at it, you know, time crunch as far as, what we've been told anyway, time closure, twenty-twenty, cost share money, all that good stuff.
Right, right. I was gonna ask, I hadn't heard the date, in the last couple of years I haven't asked, but you're still looking twenty-twenty?
That's what we're, best information we have, to date.
Are you not gonna renew those permits?
Some of the permits in two thousand nineteen and some in two thousand twenty will expire.
And so, I mean, just on a, you know, pragmatic logistical thing, the ones that would be, you know, there's some you probably wouldn't fit for you to look at, but the ones that would, it'd be great to have, that's what you guys do, correct?
An example, this one, we ran a line out to it, but if you could just reestablish the wetlands, all that, most we need is an overflow.
Absolutely, I've got this one right here.
Yeah, gotcha. You know, and a person could look at the other ends of the other radials too, you bet.
Which ones were you talking about?
I think that one here. Like this one, this one, and these two. The two up by the highway, the one to the west, and then the one to the southeast seem to be logical ones to start with.
That's exactly my thought process. And I mean, I'd like to see, we can't languish around here kicking this down the road. It's been kicked down the road for a long time.
You bet.
And if you could make note of that, work with Rick to what degree.
Sure.
And keep us up to speed. And I just think that as soon as a person can go out and look.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we're talking in generalities, then we could talk in more specifics as far as these sites.
You know, what, I guess, how I see that playing out in the big picture is, maybe there's one, maybe there's a couple of these that are appropriate for us to partner with you guys on. That takes that much off of your plate to work on the other ones.
Bingo.
And I think that gets you, you know, further down the road.
Yep.
I think that'll be useful. So absolutely, yep, but Rick and I will sit down together and...
Sure, down here enough, we can coordinate it, I can even not charge time toward this as far as that goes, so. Make that easier too.
Don't worry, he'll charge time for something else, but have some relationship to that.
Probably.
I got you, sure, sure.
That would be great. I don't know, what do you guys think, in that?
Well, I'm all for it, because I had had several phone calls from farmers that have put patterned tile in a lot of these fields that are going, opposed drainage going towards them and they're scared to death that...
Right.
That they're gonna lose their drainage.
They're gonna come across their property with major tile and just screw up a hundred and sixty-some acres of patterned tile.
Right. And I've been on the flip side of it, that relates a little bit more towards restoring wetlands. Folks that, well, this chunk with the ag well is in CRP right now.
Sure.
And that's obviously probably the ones Rick just pointed out to you.
Right, right.
They're a little bit more favorable to this type of a project. And I think, I mean, if we get more particular information, you know, it's all generalities right now, and get that back to the landowners, that they might say, "This is a way better, more viable option than me spending..."
It'd be nice if we had a map that was color-coded who were pro-wetlands and who was...
Yeah, that would be nice, but...
Well...
I can try to get something off.
I think you just look at the ones that are more readily converted.
I was on a deal the other day that said they were pro or against.
Because, you know...
And what kind of town?
Some of the issues I heard is, you know, these people wanna farm their land and if they can't, they have to go buy something somewhere else.
Exactly.
And that's tough to do and it's, you might have to buy something twenty miles away. It's not very handy.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Well, the other thing is, you have some women that, you know, they're nervous, "Will I make the right decision?" or, you know, the, been in the family for a hundred years and they're scared to death of both directions. Put it in wetland, what do I lose? What, if I continue to hopefully tile it, how much is the bill gonna be?
Yeah, the bill's gonna be nasty.
Yeah. That's the scary part. We're trying to go both directions and see what works best for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Instead of having individual little areas or little pockets, is there a way to work with someone else to have a greater area that would work together in both aspects?
Very possibly. As long as, honestly, as long as we can figure out how to cash flow it and get benefit out of it.
Right.
We're open to looking at those, absolutely, yep. Quick question I've got, maybe it's not quick. On the figure that Mike Roy provided to me, he's got, you know, ISU average land value of seventy-eight hundred an acre. I'm just curious, in this particular region, is there a range that you guys are seeing and working with? And I'll tell you why. My first reaction was, "That's kinda hot for us." I'm here to be honest with you. We're looking at a lot of land for, you know, five thousand an acre. We're looking at one right now for, south of Des Moines, it's thirty-five hundred an acre. That allows us...
To buy more acres.
To buy more acres. But tell me, you know, what's your, what's your, what's your thought of that figure right there? Do you think it's all gonna be at that, some of it higher, some of it lower?
I don't think so. I think that's an average. And I think the stuff that, on a way above that, is what Bruce just talked. Well, of course, those people, that's going to cross someone with pattern tiling. But it speaks to pattern-tiled, farmed fields, that won't even touch it today.
Right, right.
But when, on the lower end of it, and it's sitting in CRP right now, that's more than it's worth.
Got you, okay, that helps me frame that. Not having any context and just having a number on a sheet of...
That's an average.
Sure, got you, okay, good, that's awful. My board of directors will appreciate that.
So probably you're still, but, in all fairness, you might be looking a little bit higher dollar value in this part of the country than you are looking in southern Iowa.
Absolutely, you bet.
Even for the mitigated wetland areas.
We know we're not gonna find thirty-five hundred an acre or anything like that.
No, even the stuff that's sitting in CRP, I don't think you'll get that.
No, you won't get it for that because the CRP payments are so stinking high.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, but yeah, I believe that's on the average line is what that number is.
Sure, yep, no, that's very helpful. Good. Well, I'm anxious to stem and work with Rick a little bit and we'll get some ideas put together.
That sounds good.
Something will float to the surface here that seems to make sense and...
That's what we're looking for.
We have things like actual locations of each well, what the tile elevations are that come into it, topography of the entire area, some of the other drainage districts that you maybe will end up going through. All of that information right at hand.
I have to, maybe I shouldn't assume, but I'm gonna assume that there's, you know, well and, certified well determination's done on all this land so far.
Not necessarily, we're finding some of it isn't. Like, we have a project coming up, letting, in a week, there's like three landowners that haven't answered them yet.
Oh, sure, got you, okay.
But.
So we really don't have a number of acres that are.
No.
We don't have that number yet to deal with.
But absolutely fine, well, and we've got a place to start, uh, because, because this project is, really serves NRCS, that's the first thing they ask us, that, you know, we, we take a site to them for, for approval, first thing they ask for is, is there a well determination done for it? They want to make sure that we're not claiming credit for something that's already well. They want to, you know, they're interested in something that's prior converted, then we can convert back. So, you bet.
Maybe an appropriate thing to do is send a letter out to all these landowners. We have a standard letter we use that, as far as asking them to request wetland determination. But that usually involves a project that's going to happen. So this is a little different than that, but.
Well, this would be a really good time to do that.
Yes.
It, it, it's just one of those things that, it shouldn't take a long time, but sometimes it does. NRCS is still, you know, six, eight weeks behind in, in processing those requests, so if, and you know, if, if we're ready to move forward on something, that, that's just something that can, can sometimes hold things up.
Well, could you do that?
Oh, sure, we have that letter, it doesn't, I could just have our tech and our, our secretary basically take care of it. I just review it, so you won't have much engineering time in it.
Because.
Yeah, we can reword a letter just a little bit different, since it would be for possible wetland mitigation projects. Yeah, I could revise that in half an hour and have other people look up, get names and addresses.
Especially if, if, if most of the lenders already have their wetland determination, and, you know, there's a handful that, that don't yet, you can just target those.
Yeah, there's probably, probably a fair amount of them have already gone through that process.
I was asking, so. I would think so, just, just knowing what's, you know, what's going to happen.
Yeah, whenever you need to do any tiling, you have to have that.
Right.
But there is prob, I'm sure there's some that, that just don't know.
That's right.
And now is the time to do it.
Right.
This is something you have time to do. You don't have to have the weather be nice to get that determination. We have to have the weather be nice for you to go out and physically look at these areas.
Sure, sure.
And then if you come across someplace and it's like, this will work well for what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know if there's what the determination is.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
I think that'd be a wonderful, good idea to do now.
I think that makes sense, you bet.
You'd be taking a definite step forward by.
Yes, well, absolutely, and that's what we're trying, we're trying to get steps forward.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. I, I, I like to use the term, you know, a big complex project like this, it needs a master plan. What, what's first step? What are, what are the, you know, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, how do you keep the whole organization moving forward? To me, this is something that just darn near looks like it needs a master plan to figure out how to, how to get to the end point.
Or either that, or you just start taking this little pieces at a time.
Right, well, absolutely.
Because it's fairly overwhelming as a big project, but now we're in a smaller portion of it.
Yep.
And let's, let's take some small bites out of it and, and see if we can make sense out of that.
Absolutely.
Well, it's only, basically, the only option we have, is if we don't do something soon, and that money goes away.
They're going to keep holding that carrot out there, this money, and I, you know, there's on, I'm just going to have the ongoing discussion too. Kevin even mentioned it, thought that maybe the state would step up to the plate and say, you know, we're going to have to do something above and beyond just idals cost share money to create a well. And not yet to be seen.
I, I totally agree, I'm, uh, I'm sometimes an optimist to fault. But in my opinion, the way to take care of this, this opportunity, I'm not even going to call it a problem. I mean, this is, this is a very unique situation where the state legislature needs to come in and appropriate, you know, five million dollars or whatever it is, and just get it done.
It doesn't think it's going to happen with current budget situation.
No, I don't think it's going to happen.
No, it's not a good time on that.
It, it's not. Yeah, years ago, I thought for sure that's what was going to happen, I mean, you guys probably did too, but yeah, the situation we're in now is, is much different, so.
Well, thanks for.
So you two will work?
Yes.
Together and.
Yes.
You'll send out the reminders to get their determinations?
Yep, yep.
Because I, you know darn well there's some that aren't.
That's right. And ask for the permission to get the ones that are done already.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely, start, start building a file for, you know, those, those that are done, you know, so they're all in one place, and yeah, that'd be, that'd be very helpful for us.
Well, at that time, do you think it'd be, since you're going to send the letter out, do you think we should put on a letter that if they would like to listen to Kevin? Would, or would we?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Or can you just send, do you mind if I just send your contact information?
That's fine, absolutely fine, I wish I would have brought some, I, I, we've got brochures for the Iowa mitigation bank, a website that's real easy to follow. Uh, we've, we've got a tremendous amount of PR stuff written. I just didn't think to bring any of that.
Well, you probably have your website as listed on your card, is it not?
Actually, well, let me give you a different one, because that's where all the important information is.
All the good stuff that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, so, so my company EOR, we're a contract manager of, of the Iowa mitigation bank, so it's really a separate project. But iowamitigation.com is what you need to look at, and feel free to, you know, send, you know, send your, your landowners.
Is it Iowa spelled out?
Iowa spelled out, yep, all one word, no caps, iowamitigation.com. We've, uh, we've got a brand new feature on there that's a survey tool to be able to collect information from landowners that, you know, somebody that might be interested in, you know, hearing firsthand, that, you know, sit down with us, or they've got a need for credits, or they've got a, or an interest in a potential site, you have to, to figure that out on there.
Awesome. Okay, well, we appreciate you coming up here.
Absolutely, you bet.
Thank you very much, Kevin, that was great information.
We've allowed a little bit of time, I hope we can make something work here, like I said, this is.
Were you on a panel down at ISAC a few years ago?
Yes, probably was.
I think so.
I do a lot of, I do a lot of talking about that one, yeah.
Remember that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Also, their cost up here goes higher yet.
Others, you maybe don't even have to run this line.
Well, you don't run that line, partially, you're probably going to have to run it self.
Yeah, it would be a balancing act to make that come out.
Are we?
Yeah, but you're right.
Some acres will come off, so, but then you have less cost.
Moving forward, do we need a break, or what do you want to do?
Rick?
What do we got left here?
We got two.
We got eighty-four.
We've got about ten minutes. You want to go ten?
Ten minutes, we're done.
Ten minutes, and then we got.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Time to break between with the media, Pat, Peggy.
Yeah, let's just pound her out, in my opinion, I guess.
Andrew, if you want to visit with him a second, or you got, you got all these contacts?
Yeah, yeah, we should be fine.
Well, let's get moving then, we'll go to DD number eighty-four, accept reclassification report, and set a hearing date for that.
These those, the reports without dollars in them, the tradition, those include all the branches and everything. I have done a spreadsheet with estimated costs for you guys to be able to look at. And all we're really after today is to have you set a hearing date, um, this will be the first you'll see this, so I know it's going to be hard to have much of our questions. And we can talk about it again very easily, but this is officially submitted to be able to set a hearing date. And eighty-four is.
What's your thing, yes?
It catches Bradgate, mostly in Bradgate, and there's some farmland to the north that, okay, well, you're all familiar with Bradgate enough. If you go north on the blacktop where it hits the top of the hill, that's about how far eighty-four goes. All the farmland from that point south comes into eighty-four, so.
Is that the one we were talking about before, that possibly Bradgate was having the water issues?
That's what, that's what spurred the reclassification, yeah, expense to the drainage district. And then use having a reclassification to cover that.
Yeah.
Um. Eighty-four, we spread ten thousand dollars just to have some numbers to look at. Bills have been paid on that already, right, for the source repairs, so this will be for future, anything in the future.
Anything in the future, okay.
So.
What kind of a date do we need to put on this?
Forty days, I didn't look at when that would be, probably just.
Six pages.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Was it March nineteenth-ish? Nothing, twenty-sixth is enough.
Should we move it to March twenty-sixth? We're for sure out of forty days then.
There's nothing going on.
That would be you there.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'll make a motion for March twenty-sixth at nine o'clock.
Nine AM, March twenty-sixth.
Second that.
For DD eighty-four. They have a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, we're at nine o'clock on the twenty-sixth of March. That's the reclass?
And that's basically what this is all about?
Yes. Yeah, they're just bringing up the reclass up to date.
Yeah.
So.
We're not, there's no project?
No, no. No, just so the billing gets billed out accurately.
Right, yep.
Is there any pending bills to be sent out?
No, no, I don't think so.
So it's just.
Just getting.
Why is this being done now versus sooner?
Just, just a matter of getting it in place for future work.
Yeah.
There was not anticipated much cost for this repair, now they add it up, but.
Well, there was some changes after we looked at stuff on who was benefiting more and less.
Yeah, to get it more accurate.
Well, you're right, that's the reclass part of it.
Yeah.
So it was a little bit prompted from an earlier project.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we did a report for a possible project along the route going south to the trail.
Mm-hmm.
And then was determined to do more exploratory and see if they couldn't get it repaired instead of replacing that line.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what was done.
Okay.
So that helped keep the cost down.
But in the same token, then it, obviously, it's a good idea to get the reclassification done, for anything future would be more equitable.
Right.
Exactly.
That's right, make it more fair.
Okay.
There were some areas annexed that would now be in here.
Yep, so this would cover everything, so you really don't look, other than this, as a technicality, as they have to be.
Yeah, it's pretty much just a technicality.
Technicality for the reclass, and then is this a hearing date as well? Because it says end hearing date.
Yes.
So it would be, this is a published, all that good.
Yep, that's why we're doing it for forty days, so that way somebody doesn't.
I just want to make sure I'm not missing something here.
Yeah, everybody mentioned, every parcel mentioned in here, we'll get a notice.
Okay.
All right, then, let's go to number ninety-two, accept reclassification, except same, hearing date.
This is the ninety-two one with dollars in it. And this, I think, is close to what you will have in the job. There was some in-town stuff done on DD ninety-two, and the intent of this is to take care of that, the repair work. I think I, Tricia had, I think, sixty-one thousand and some dollars into it, from, even though I got trimmer. So I put sixty-five thousand as far as causing, spreading the costs. Some of the costs per acre look high, but when you look at their actual, the amount they're going to pay, that's the second column from the right. It's the amount it's going to pay, you know, here's the lots, eighteen, fourteen, nineteen, forty lots. So it is not very sizable, except for commercial ground, because a lot of paved areas. So there's five or six of them that pay substantially, rest of them are, are very, very reasonable.
City Gilmore City again?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there'll be some controversy there, but they have the streets and that's a hundred percent runoff, so.
And the cost, the estimated cost down there includes the assessments that were from DD two, um, two ninety-two.
Okay.
It's not just repair.
Not just the repairs, yeah.
Yeah.
Catches everything.
This is their access to two also, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yep.
Same idea, everybody get notice, um, have the hearing.
Can we do that same day?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I'd suggest that, I guess.
I'd move, we have the reclassification of DD ninety-two on March twenty-sixth at nine thirty.
I'll second that. You think you're going to need thirty minutes for eighty-four?
I think there'll be enough questions. I guess I hesitate to.
Make it shorter, okay.
Okay.
I don't know.
Are you talking on eighty-four, I don't think we need a half an hour between eighty-four and ninety-two.
Well, that's what I wanted, if you want eighty-four for fifteen and go at nine fifteen.
I think we ought to change it to nine fifteen myself.
I'm, I'm sure okay with that, I don't, let me.
You want to change your motion there, Carl, make it nine fifteen?
Fine with me. Otherwise, it could be twiddling our thumbs for.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We could eat a lot of cookies, so nine one.
I'd make that motion change it.
We have now nine fifteen for DD two, that's the reclass and the hearing.
Second that. If it wasn't already.
And a third.
And a third.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, we're at nine fifteen.
Excellent.
Okay, any other? Interest in the drainage part, I have a couple of comments, I had, see, Harlan's sitting here. I had a conversation on Friday with the gentleman from, uh, ADF.
He's Paul.
Uh, it's Mike, yeah. We had quite a discussion, he's a little worried about our business, job letting business coming up, up there on their property, because of the fact that he, as he sees, the, the way the plan is put together, our description is to how we, or how you put that together, uh, Rick is, well, he figures, um, kind of slanted towards concrete. And he's a little worried that, you know, we're requiring that when they put plastic in there, that it's got to be basically around, around the whole thing, is that the way it was, Harlan? With rock, as opposed to, um.
Using a spoon.
Yeah, using the spoon technique and digging it, if it needs rock, putting rock in the base. And he said their engineer is willing to give us, uh, or I'll use a better term, I guess, give us the, the, uh, their best knowledge as to that suitable. Now, he said there's some places where it's pretty deep, that they would recommend that it has some more rock put around it. But he said, I just, uh, I really feel like when we come over there, and he's going to be here for it, he said, I really feel like, um, plastic's going to kind of get beat up, because we're going to have to do the, all over and above with concrete. So I guess I'm, I'm asking, is that, and I know you haven't done a whole lot with, with plastic part, but when he tells me that they have all this plastic that they're using in Minnesota, southern part of Minnesota, uh, there's a lot of plastic over there that leaves Eagle Grove every day. And I'm not trying to say, say we go one way or the other, all I'm trying to say is, is we've asked for, the time that I've been on this board, constantly trying to get plastic to, you know, put a bid in here, so that we can see, are we comparing apples to apples? And I guess that's, my question is, is are we being a little more cautious with them, or what do you say?
We are being more cautious, definitely, because with plastic pipe, the structure isn't in the pipe. It's, it's a flexible pipe, it's described as a flexible pipe.
Sure.
Whereas the concrete is considered a rigid pipe. And we did do an addendum that went out Friday, called for the concrete to have a shaped face. Feeling that, you know, to balance out things better and, and to get more factor of safety with the concrete pipe, that we would do that.
And after visiting, and I'm not going to interrupt you, but after visiting with you on Friday when they called you, you said you've got twenty-one people, or twenty-one business plans? So the interest is out there.
Yeah.
I'm just, I just want to make sure that, that we, you know, that was the purpose when we put this whole thing together was.
Well, the idea of doing the plastic is to lower the cost.
Right.
And if you go to all the expense of covering it up with rock that isn't needed.
Right.
That's.
Not only that, but you know as well as I do, the plastic, bringing plastic out into a field, um.
The weight.
Effective a lot less.
Your compression is way less.
Um, you have the ability to get it out there, you're putting it in twenty, he said twenty-foot sticks for most of it, some of the bigger stuff, it wouldn't be that. Um, you have the ability to get it out there, you're putting it in twenty, he said twenty-foot sticks for most of it, some of the bigger stuff, it wouldn't be that long. The joints, you know, I, I think there's enough, um, in my opinion, advantages to try and to use it, um, versus, you know, they have the ability to, I, I haul concrete pipes, so I know when they, when there's an angle, when it turns a corner and you don't have that proper fit, it sucks dirt, and that's the part that scares me. Um, but I'm not, I'm just asking the questions, cause I told him I would ask. And I guess I feel...
Is that salesman talking or engineer?
That's the, the salesman, and he would bring his engineer over here. And that's why I'm, I'm questioning, it's same people that we sit down here and listen to in four dots.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not trying to sway the board one way or the other. I'm just trying to figure out a way that, you know, if, if they're gonna make, if our requirements are that that pipe has to be covered and basically all the way around with rock, then their engineer says it's not needed. But our engineer says it is. So who's the engineer? The engineer's telling me.
He's getting paid by the salesman.
Well, yeah. Florida DOT did an extensive study on plastic pipe. And we have statements that they put out where the only way that the plastic pipe will get near the life of the concrete is it's encased in a hundred percent crushed stone. There's been two recent failures in Hardin County of plastic pipe. Uh, that report, nobody's been able to get their hands on, uh, as far as, uh, what they found out. But they did replace like forty thousand feet of pipe. Um, and an engineering company, uh, went out of business. If they could guarantee the pipe and we were not held liable, that would change my things a little bit. Cause I wanna, I'd love to see a hundred-year life out of it.
I would too.
I mean, look at the, how many systems you have now that are over a hundred years old. And the product control now is a lot better than it was back then. So, uh, when you look at comparable life, I think you have to have the crushed stone. The, the plastic is more of a conduit to, to carry the water, uh, and the stone is your structure. It's just hard to get away from that. Um, the, the, the statement I like is with concrete pipe, the structure arrives with the pipe. With plastic, you have to build the structure around the pipe. We put in plastic. We've got two jobs in Palo Alto County that we did a couple of years ago in plastic. Now, we did have a couple of issues with it where the contractor quit for the day and, and kept plugged the end of the pipe. We had a rainstorm, he came back the next day and the last pipe had gone like this, and we got dirt in the pipe. He had to hire a jetter to clean out the pipe he put in the ground. Happened to him twice, and this is very conscientious contracting. We've, we've got some history with plastic where a lot of contractors don't like to do it, especially if it's wet conditions because it floats.
That is one of my biggest concerns.
There's, it's all over the country there's...
And I see when they dig these trenches, I, oh, it's dry out. But then when I dig that trench down fifteen feet, the amount of water that coming out over here by Thor, I couldn't believe it.
Oh, yeah.
We had a pretty darned dry summer.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It was just like a river running in there.
Now, they've tried to do things like drill holes in it to, to, you know, make it less susceptible to floating, but then you're losing structure again.
Right.
So, um, I think including the plastic, no matter how stringent you make the specs, will help your price because concrete people know that you're bidding plastic to.
Well, and that's all they ask. He says, I'm not asking that anybody twists anybody's arms, I'm not asking. He says, all I wanna do is I wanna be, you know, um, on the same page. And if, you know, by the same token, in my opinion, I've hauled concrete pipe, I've watched them install concrete pipe, and when you have an eight-foot chunk of concrete and you're starting to turn a corner, sometimes you don't always have that flush.
Yeah.
That joint, and that sucks dirt. And we know, you know, if we aren't standing there, that a chunk of plastic, chunk of cardboard, something gets shoved in there, and I will just call it good, well, that's how it works.
I've seen coveralls.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of that.
Well, I agree with Bruce, I mean, the, yeah, the structure is a structure. The installation can be loused up with concrete.
Can be less likely, cause it's so forgiving. Um, but that's why we're doing this extra that we haven't been doing lately, just to make it a factor of safety.
Looking at the, the installation of the plastic and all of this additional rock to, to gain structure and strength and all that. Are you looking at the fact that it's installed with the, you know, they call it the spoon bill? You know, so it, when the trench is being dug for plastic, it's actually a rounded trench that it fits in? Or are you just figuring, ah, it's a standard, you know, rectangular trench? You put it down in there, you throw a bunch of rock in with it? You know, so, because, like you said, we've come a long ways with things. Well, we've come a long way with the installation of the plastic. It's installed a little bit differently to help with its strength.
What you run into, though, is so often, when you're shaping that, you're not getting that good material there, uh, where it's stable. Where it really provides the support. And they've also lessened that shape to the point that they're allowing space on each side so it can compress some before it hits that, uh, spoon side. So the other thing they've done is, is they've lessened the requirements for ag compared to town work.
Yeah.
Which I...
It, it doesn't get near the compaction of road wood?
No, no, true, but paved road actually protects the pipe probably.
Well, that technique right there, that Bill Mansky sent this video of them putting tile in up there, to me, um, that looks pretty, I mean, that's clay, and they got, um, the tile set in there, and then they got rock all over the top of it. Uh, I think that looks pretty, pretty good.
It's, it's decent, you know, and maybe you'll get forty or fifty years out of it. The problem is too, when we added this to the concrete, we also added that the cu- plastic had to be tested for, uh, being deflected.
Compaction?
Yeah, because everywhere you read, it calls for that, and we didn't have that in the specs originally either. So that's gonna add some cost again. So, cause they recommend only five percent deflection, uh, thirty days after it's installed. Uh, otherwise it's gonna keep failing more and more. And the problem doesn't happen for a long time because it's gradual failure.
Yeah, it's settling over time.
Yeah, and how do you measure ten to twenty percent loss in capacity? Unless you've set up flow meters and everything else, you'll never notice it.
Yeah.
Well, the good thing was is when I talked with you, and I talked with the gentleman from over there, and I talked with Harland, and, you know, they're not doing the project so that twenty-five years from now that they're gonna have, wish they wouldn't have done it. I mean, they're doing it for the, the next generation, and hopefully it'll, it'll last a long time. So I guess that's the, the fifty-dollar question is, you know, we have the ability, but the guy from Eagle Grove, all he said was that I just wanna, I mean, I wanna make sure that we're on the same equal playing field here. If, if I gotta put rock all the way around mine, then it, it's gonna add a huge amount of num- uh, cost to mine.
It adds several dollars a foot. Yes.
I guess that was, you know...
We've always designed that we have similar service lengths. And if the reading we do and the testing that's been done, they're saying a hundred percent crushed material. Now, we also feel you need full-time inspection out there. Not as much for the concrete because the rock isn't as critical, um, but...
Well, I'd argue that point. I feel a full-time inspection on both sides because...
And we're great with that, cause it, it just helps...
You have the ability to, um, watch when they make a, a joint and make sure that it's shoved up against there. And I guess I've argued that point since I've joined this group. I think that it should have some, some type of supervision as opposed to, well, we're just hoping that the contractor's gonna do it.
Well, yeah, and we're, we're absolutely fine with that. Just feel that there isn't, it isn't as critical with the concrete because of, like I say, the structure arrives on the truck. But it is important that every joint gets pushed together properly.
You know, I'd rather have an opinion from a non-particle engineer than around my partial than some engineer that works for the plastic company. They're, they're gonna be swayed to start with. They shouldn't be. I'm not saying a pro or a con, but I don't think we're getting a fair speed when you have engineer from that company tell us what to do.
Well, yeah.
I don't know if he's telling anybody what to do. All he's asking is, is they've, they've decided that they're gonna make me put rock instead of on the base. Now I gotta put rock on the base, then lay the pipe in, then I gotta close the whole thing with rock.
Yeah.
In order to what?
To the top of the pipe.
You know as well as I do, when they take a, a load of rock out into the middle of the field, Rick Eaton's voice in here anytime, dump a load of rock in the middle of the field, and you're gonna put six inches over the top of this pipe from here to the north side of Kitty Cat Daycare. Well, you got a kid that's in a hurry and it's quarter to four, and hell, I got a date tonight, and I dump two dozen buckets here, and I spread a couple more, throw some shovels, and we push the dirt over it. Is that in case? Because in four years, when it fails, they're gonna pick, dig it up, and there's no rock over it. Whose fault was it? Was it the person that put it in? Was it the us for doing it?
Probably fifteen years ago, we had sanitary sewer put in Esterville, on an abandoned railroad right-of-way. And, uh, it was plastic and called for rock embedment. The, we pulled the mandrel through it, and it got hung up in a location. Uncovered it, and there was just like a four-foot stretch where they didn't get enough rock in there. And that was just enough to cause that deflection. So the, it, it had compressed too much to meet specs. So it, yeah, it's all very critical.
I think, you know, we're, we're really looking for, obviously we want the best possible project because it's a long-term project. It's not a ten, you know, it's not a ten-year project, it's a hundred-year project.
Yes.
It, that's what we really want, but I think a lot of this speaks back to, if we can get that same end accomplished and save money, cause it's the landowners, like Harland's sitting over there, that ultimately are paying for these projects. We'd like, and that's something what Bruce keeps stressing, the viable option, if it is a less cost option for the same quality product, is what we're looking at.
And that's the point that he's trying to get across.
I understand.
If we don't ever get a comparable bid for plastic and we just continue to accept
Yes.
the concrete, then we don't know if that's, we're comparing apples to apples.
Bingo.
They'd have to haul in X amount of ton of rock to and close their
Yep.
pipe. That's what he's asking.
Yep, and I just, you know, make habitually the anti-plastic, always do something that makes it too cost prohibitive, and there is no difference in cost. In Rick's defense, I understand his thought process, a hundred-year, don't want it to fail.
Yeah, you want it to err on the side of course.
We ha- we get after you because we have to. But, in all fairness, I know that you're, there again, we we look out for the best interest of the people in these districts, in these projects. And, you know, the best interest is a good quality project, A. But, you know, if it is a, a cost savings on the flip side, we definitely have to look at that. We can't just keep putting robots in front of cost savings. Uh, if, if it ends up along the lines that it is a good quality longevity project.
And the other one was, is we put a stipulation with you guys having seed out there. They want it done by a certain amount of time, and they want it, you know, the, the, the seed companies don't like them messing around with their
Right.
disturbance there. So, you know, those twenty... Right, those twenty-foot sections sure go quick.
Now, keep in mind, to get that ag well closed, we don't have to have the main in the ground yet.
Right.
So, um, the, the effort needed in the field where the seed corn is gonna be, is gonna be just at the well. And just making the bad conditions. Yes. Yeah, they could come in and do that and then come back two months later as far as starting on the rest of the job. That field will still be okay, cause it'll still have the fifteen-inch.
Well, with twenty-one bids, I'm hoping that if we get half of those, we get ten interested people. Um, then at least somebody hopefully will venture out on the end of the limb and say, well, I've done plastic a lot, and I'm not afraid of this, and give us a good comparable bid for, for that, and that way it'll hopefully keep all of us... We, we've done eighteen-inch dual-wall plastic, it sure is nice to install. We got a spoon in our bucket, makes the form trench. But if I gotta put gravel underneath and over it, the ease of, uh, at the, or ease of installation has disappeared.
Yeah, then, then it's easier to put the cement in.
I might as well do cement then.
Yeah, that's true. I can't argue with that.
Bruce is right, play a third of the semi-trucks to haul the wall of plastic or that same...
Yeah, and then you gotta haul the rock out there, which is way more than the haul the cement.
Right, then you just, that's what I'm saying, if you keep putting a stipulation on there, you automatically negated the, the cost savings of the plastic.
And I imagine that's where the ADS comes coming in, so like, well, you didn't even me up the concrete.
Exactly.
The problem with plastic is it ain't been in the ground a hundred years yet. And you know it's gonna survive. But deflection is, I know as a farmer, it's sure nice throwing out there with a hole saw, zip into that plastic and make a connection and add some more line.
Yeah.
Concrete is a lot more problematic. Well, he, that was his, when you hear the click of those two ends going together, you know it's sealed. As opposed to, well, I think that we got the joint on there, it's like wrapped in.
You know, tapping into the side of it, they got them, them watertight plugs they put in them that you get, you get a better fit on your joints for when you hook into them and...
Well, the dual-plastic doesn't worry.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have the same positive, uh, connection for laterals that, it's just really nice, isn't it, Rick?
I definitely like the plastic connection or butt joint better than concrete, but it's the deflection, and I understand Rick's point, it's, it's an ongoing discussion until we probably have plastic in there around a hundred years.
Well, and it is, we see examples of the, the plastic being installed. There was a very recent, cause it just got done, it was an ag well closure, but it was a private one.
Yes.
So, and it was done with all plastic. And, uh, wonderfully installed, uh, went fairly quickly. You know, they hit a couple snags on the, you know, the places where you run into that bad soil structure.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it took rock, it took some additional, and, uh...
Well, you, you hit that, you know, in Humboldt County, it's just, how much of it do you hit?
Right, but at any rate, the law, the gist of it is, um, it wasn't a drainage district project, it was a privately done project to close an ag well. They said, you know, we'll go with the plastic, they were extremely happy. You know, uh, feel, I'm sure, like, there again, a hundred years from now, it, it better still be working, obviously. But, I mean, it just, there again, and had that been, uh, in a drainage district, you know, we'd have probably, we'd have been back, back to the same discussion. You know, would that have been done? You know, would concrete would have been done with plastic? This way, they said, you know, means they were paying for it privately. There, obviously, obviously, their decision was plastic, and obviously the reason for that was, it's less expensive.
Well, if we put it in the minutes that a hundred years from now, that the people that are pissed and come and kick over our headstones,
Yes.
Put that in the sheriff's report.
Yeah.
Someone does damage to our stones. I mean, I'm just, I, all I did, I told him I'd bring it up, and I...
And I did the estimates for each of these jobs, each of the options, and, um, it kind of balanced out that there was two or three of, well, we've got six options now. We've got the concrete, half inch, one inch, we've got the dual-wall, half inch, one inch, we've got the polypropylene, half inch, one inch. About half of those, the concrete came out cheaper, and about half of them, the plastic came out cheaper. How, how deep is this project?
Yeah, that was another question.
Oh, portions of it approach fifteen feet.
I was gonna say, I heard it said between thirteen and twenty-two, was the deepest of the two areas. And he said on those where it's that deep, he didn't have, their engineer didn't have any issues with not, or with covering.
Without covering, it was rock.
He said that, they were fine with that, because that's the way they do it up north. So, anyway, I don't wanna keep beating them down.
Well, but that's good discussion.
Yeah, and I, I, I just, the structure thing is, is what, I can't get out of my head. How do you get the same structure with both pipes?
Right.
And it takes more rock with the plastic, so. I believe just having the plastic in there will help your concrete prices. Yeah, I, I really do. We just had a couple of bids up in Palo Alto County last week, and the concrete prices have crept up. And I, I will admit that, so.
You think that was enough of the, it will help the concrete, it's not putting the fear of God into the concrete pipe builders. You think, you think it's making the contractors more reasonable in their bids?
Yes, it, that's what, that's what I'm thinking is happening with, with the alternance we have now.
But then, the cost of the concrete pri- pipe would be where your savings would be, if, if they lower the cost of the concrete pipe. But I don't see this phasing the concrete pipe builders a whole lot, maybe it is a little bit, I don't know.
I came across a note I've made recent, not twenty years ago, that... I came across a note I made recent, not twenty years ago, that, um, that your manufacturer here in Humboldt had told me on the phone, "Use their list prices, but knock off forty percent," uh, as far as they're saying to contractors. Now, I don't think they're getting that anymore. I think it's a much smaller percentage they're knocking off, so.
We got a motion to go out of drainage, where she's...
So move.
...givering over here, she's...
Motion to go out of drainage. Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, or?
Aye.
Those saying aye, if we're out of drainage. Um, I guess, I don't know, Trish, or if Peggy's going to come back in, and we're...
I don't think so, I think we're done with her, aren't we?
No, yeah, Roger, she's got...
I know, but we got to adjourn.
Can we adjourn for a second? We can just adjourn, man. How about we, uh, redo the motion for the better meeting?
You'll have to do both, one of each, I think.
All right, well, then we'll, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.